Good evening. Welcome to Grand Blank Township Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, July 12th. If you could all rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good evening in our brand-new boardroom here, our first meeting, and it's looking beautiful, and we'll talk about that in a little bit, but at this time, Clerk Robertson, would you call the roll?
I would be happy to, Mr. Supervisor. Trustee Hugo?
Here.
Trustee Fike?
Here.
Trustee Raridan?
Here.
Trustee White?
Here.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Here.
I'm here, of course. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven-nothing, or seven people members present, a quorum.
Thank you.
Present.
And now I will ask for motion for approval of the agenda. Ms. Hugo, supported by Mr. Fike?
Motion by Hugo, supported by Fike, for the agenda. Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven-nothing, motion passes.
Thank you. At this time, we will open the floor for public comment. We just ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, please, and if you wish to give us your name and address for the record, that'd be helpful. So, anybody like to make public comment? Okay. Seeing no public comment, we will close public comment, bring it back here to the board. And at this time, we have Chief Burdatt is going to recognize a few individuals, and I'll leave that to Chief Burdatt. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, thank you very much. Is it okay if I? Well, that's real. Okay, thanks, guys. All right, well, a few months, oh, last month, Village of Holly was devastated by a fire in their historic district. This evening, I'd like to recognize two, well, three individuals who are residents of Grand Blank, who are also cadets of the Village of Holly Fire Department. So, I'm asking for Anthony Frank and Jonathan Cross. If you guys could stand, please. Come on up here. Whoops, come on up here. So, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna need to turn this over to Katie Hardman. She is their director of the cadet program in Village, so I'm just gonna let her talk about that program and what they did for Holly Fire Department and all the fire departments that were there that afternoon. Okay?
Hello, I'm Katie Hardman. I'm a firefighter, paramedic, and the cadet coordinator for the Village of Holly Fire Department. We started our cadet program about a year ago, and we have six cadets. They're two of ours, and they come with us every Monday night to do training at our department for a couple hours. They get real hands-on experience of what it's like to be in the fire and EMS service. They also get to do ride-along calls with us and get to see what it's really like. On, I wrote a little something. So, on the afternoon of June 21st, the Village of Holly Fire Department responded to a structure fire in our downtown historic Battle Alley. The cadets that worked at the fire were a great asset to every agency that was there. While they were not entering the structures and they operated out of harm's way, they provided support to all who responded by providing water to other firefighters, bringing supplies to the rehab tent, relaying equipment, and helping find hydrants to use and making them available or if they were unavailable. Many of them also returned on the days that followed to help around the station with washing and unpacking hose, filling air packs, and helped clean up in Battle Alley. They did all of this without hesitation or even needing to be asked. These cadets have shown a great amount of dedication to our department and our community. It has been a privilege to teach these cadets and give them skills that they may use in the future. I know that myself and many of the other members of our department are proud of what they have accomplished so far and believe that they will be a great asset to any department in the future. We're very fortunate to have them. They assist with, we get schools that come in and do field trips and boys and girl scouts, and they are always there, willing to participate, and they, they teach us as much as we teach them. So, we just wanted to recognize them for all their hard work that they do, and it really has been a privilege to have them on our department.
Being firefighters, this is an experience that hopefully none of us ever, ever have to go through, but we do it at least once or twice in our timeframe in our career. You got it a little bit early, guys. Sorry. Anthony here is the son of one of our firefighters. When he was called to come out and help fight the fire, well, you know, Anthony had no hesitation going out and doing it. He was called dad and said, hey, I'm going out there to do this, and he said, yeah, be careful. He said, I know, Dad. Be, I'm fine. It's my honor to recognize you, both of you, for your service, so thank you very much. And here are your awards. Hey, I'm in right? There you are. All right, guys, thanks again.
On behalf of our township board, we'd like to congratulate you young men as well for, and thank you for the cadet program because it certainly will probably help us to train more future firefighters for all of our departments. So, hats off to you for doing that, and thanks for all your work. Thank you, Chief Burdatt.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to approval of our consent agenda. I'm sorry?
I was gonna say, what?
Okay. If you want to stick around for the rest of our meeting, you may, but if you don't, we understand that, too.
Don't, we understand.
Okay, you'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda? Okay.
Motion by Raridan?
Yep, supported by Hugo.
Supported by Hugo.
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Hold on a minute, what is this for?
Consent agenda.
Approval of the consent agenda.
Yes.
Good. Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven-nothing, motion passes.
Thank you. Under old business, our strategic plan update, we have Plant Moran Cressa with us, project manager. Representatives, Andy Fountain and Rick Erickson, will provide an update to the board on the progress of developing plans for the new DPS, or Department of Public Service, and fire station buildings on the municipal campus. Evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Oh, that's right. Let me do that.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, and members of the board. My name is Andy Fountain, I'm with Plant Moran Cressa. Plant Moran Cressa has been engaged by the township to serve as your owner's rep for this program. Part of our roles and responsibilities are to assist and advise the township throughout the course of the design, implementation, and closeout of this program. We have a quick update for you tonight. On the agenda, we have, we're gonna review the process that we followed to date. We'll take a look at the space program that we've validated with Mr. Sears and the rest of the team. We'll take a look at the conceptual budget that we've developed, along with the preliminary schedule. We'll talk about next steps, and while it's not on there, we also reserved a slide for you to ask some questions, if you have any. With me tonight is Rick Erickson. He'll be the project manager for this program, and I'm gonna let him take us through the next series of slides, and then I'll close out at the end of the presentation.
Thank you. As I go through the presentation, if there's any comments or questions, please speak up. I'll be happy to stop and address them as they, as they come up. Once again, Rick Erickson, Plant Moran Cressa, I'm an architect by trade, project manager for this project, and we will start with our process or the steps we've completed to date. We started this by reviewing the space program document that was completed by Redstone Architects back in 2019 for the fire station, the building department, as well as the DPS, to validate that it still aligns with modern workplace standards. And then we met with the stakeholders for each of the facilities to make sure it still addressed their current and future needs, and with that, we finalized the space program, which we'll review here momentarily. With that data, we developed a conceptual budget for the project, primarily based on cost per square foot, based on our latest historical data in recent projects completed, similar in nature. And then we also developed the preliminary project schedule. Right now, it's not date-specific, it's just more duration-per-phase-specific, which you'll see here in a bit. So, this is our preliminary space program. We're not gonna review this line by line, but this is a tool that we use to capture each space type, quantity of space types, size of space types. It allows us to factor in certain circulation percentages, as well as gross-up factor, which accounts for space that's necessary but not necessarily usable, so chases, wall thickness, so on and so forth. But what this tells us at the end of this exercise ultimately is how much, oop, jumped ahead, how much square footage ultimately we're looking at here. For the fire station, we're looking at just under 15,000 square feet. You can see that up here in the summary, 14,644 square feet, and then the DPS building, which also includes the building department program elements, 48,000 square feet. So, a total program of about 62,000 square feet. We've got a little more detailed breakdown on the side here that illustrates some of the DPS functions. Aside from the main building, they have a garage, cold storage, yard storage, and vehicle equipment storage. And with that information, we were able to develop this conceptual budget. Again, this is based on cost per square foot, but we factor in everything from, this is total project budgets, we're accounting for professional services, so your AE services, owner's rep services, if we need a geotech topographical survey, that's all baked in there, regulatory permitting, construction hard costs. We factored in furniture fixtures, as well as technology. We also included a contingency in escalation, just based on current market. It's kind of a safety net that we include with most of our projects. There's a list of assumptions and clarifications in there. I won't go into great detail, but that's just some of the things that we assumed are not included in the cost. And then that brings us to our project schedule. Right now, our next step would be professional services procurement or selection of the AE and CM. We've allocated approximately four months for that step, and then we go into design phase. We're allocating approximately eight months for completion of construction documents, and then a construction phase of 14 months with closeout at three, and then we did bake in a little schedule contingency of four months, just because there's supply chain issues and lead times that we're experiencing now that are pushing a lot of our project deadlines. So, total project duration of approximately 33 months. And I know I'm going really fast, and I said this was high-level. Any questions up to this point that you want me to back up on?
I think we're good.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Kilmer?
Is this inclusive of some of the other stuff we have planned, or is this a totally separate project?
These are, these are, this is a separate project from anything else, I mean, in terms of construction, or?
Mm-hmm. I do.
Yeah, just the fire and DPS building are all we're talking about here.
That's fair.
The new one. Yep. Okay, and the next steps, I'll hand this over to Andy.
Sure. So, as Rick had mentioned, you know, the next phase of the program, the next four months, really gonna be, we're gonna be concentrating on hiring members of the team, the architect and engineer, as well as a construction manager. We've outlined what that, what that process will look like. We'll be working with Mr. Sears, with the township's legal counsel. We'll develop some RFPs and RFQs. We'll submit them for review. We'll release those out to the public to solicit, solicit proposals. We'll develop criteria, selection criteria, along with, we'll interview all the folks that provide proposals, and then we'll bring forward recommendations to you for approval. And once we complete that step, then we'll be moving right into the design phase of the program. So, you can expect to see us in the next, oh, three to four months with some, with some recommendations for you. That concludes our presentation. As I mentioned, I did save some time for any additional questions or comments.
Mr. White?
Typical project like this, how many bids are we likely to get?
A good question. We, we just, we're working with another township in West Bloomfield Township. I believe we had five architects that provided proposals on that project. We're actually getting into the bidding phase for general contractor. It's a little bit different program, much smaller scale, so we went with a different delivery method. We've discussed utilizing a construction manager for this program, primarily because a construction manager at risk will allow you to utilize pre-construction or estimating services throughout the course of the program. So, as we work through the design phase, the construction manager's gonna provide estimates, so we make sure that the program stays on budget, as intended, throughout the design process. So, when you get to bid day, we're not having any surprises about, you know, the budget or being in and out of, out of that parameter, if you will. But to answer your question, we are seeing great participation, but it is with some due diligence work by letting the folks know that these, these opportunities are gonna be forthcoming. I've already had some conversations with some groups that are interested, so I anticipate that you're gonna have great participation. I actually, I talked to one of them on my ride up here tonight.
Mr. White?
Andy, do you know roughly how many construction jobs would be created by this project, and whether any local, I mean, any consideration will be given to local subcontractors and contractors?
A great question. I would, I would hesitate to speculate, but that's something that I'd be happy to research for you as far as the number of jobs created. The second part of your question about local participation, we're certainly hoping that any of the local, you know, the local contracting community will be participating. I'd, I guess I'd engage with your, with your legal counsel regarding your procurement process, whether or not considerations given to any of the local trades when awarding the work.
Our procurement policy allows for consideration of local companies.
And we'll follow your, we'll follow your procurement policy.
Anyone else have a question or concern?
Okay.
Sounds great.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Look forward to future updates as well, as we move through the process. Okay. This time, the board will review the current non-motorized pathway plan, and, okay, Dennis and Mr. Lemina?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. One of the things, this came up a couple of meetings ago, and we talked about it, and one of the things from us as a, as a member of staff is, we wanna make sure that the board understands the amount of effort that has gone in and pre-planning. This has been around for as long as I've been here, for seven years. It is included in your master plan that was recently approved. It's included in your Parks and Recreation master plan that was recently approved and updated for the next five years, placing the township, you know, significance on expansion of our multimodal or non-motorized pathways throughout the township. One of the things that we wanted to have on the agenda for, for the conversation, is that we want the board here to look at this pathway plan. We've got some prioritization on there that we've recognized as the next steps for us. There's an outside group, the Grand Blank Grid, who has shown an interest in assisting the township in finding ways to move the plan forward, and so we're really hoping that by taking a good look at it again this evening, and taking a look at the map that was included in your packet, you can see where the township has, to date, developed the plan across all corners of the township, and our prioritization plans include, right now, Embry and Cook Road, so that it will attach to the Dort Highway pathway that will be completed in August or this year, August or September. September 21st is supposed to be the final date, so we're finally gonna have that pathway opened up, but it's gotta be connected. And one of the issues that we had when we went out for funding is that they said it's not connected to anything. So, when we looked for federal TAP grants, we ran into issues with MDOT trying to, they're like, it doesn't connect anywhere. So, this next phase actually is gonna connect the pathway that exists on Grand Blank Road. It's gonna come down Embry to Cook, and it'll connect to Dort. As part of the Baldwin Road Plan, we also, as the DDA's plan, has planned to put a non-motorized pathway down Baldwin Road. Well, currently, it would only go as far as the I-75 overpass, and then we're gonna have to work on that next phase, but when you looked at that map, you can see the idea is to bring it all the way to Saginaw, through Tech Village, eventually up Saginaw, with the idea that you're gonna be able to have an interconnected pathway, including that Iron Belt Trail that's coming from Atlas Township. It's gonna come down Perry, connect through, hit Dort, and go up north out of here and go into points north, and run eventually from Bell Isle to Ironwood, Michigan. So, at this point, it's kind of like, we've got a plan, we've prioritized where we wanna go. Are we on the right track? Does the board support this? I guess we're looking for consensus, or, you know, whether you wanna do it in a motion or in consensus, because the only way we can do this is, we're not gonna be able to build a mile a year. It's prohibitively expensive. It's gonna be a million dollars a mile. But what we can do is continue to work our prioritization and plan to do something every three years, you know, every two to three years, by setting aside capital funds each year, with the idea that we're gonna have to have a matching amount, and then we're gonna have to combine it with federal and state and local dollars in order to complete these pathways and do this interconnected pathway. But it, you know, this can be frustrating because it's a slow process. I think if you look at the Grand Blank Grid's website, you'll see, you know, like, you know, six roads in six years or whatever. You know, that would be an awesome thing if you had $7 million to complete some of those connections, but from my standpoint as your budget manager, I have to come at it and say, this is what we can afford to do. We're gonna go after it a piece at a time, and we're gonna try to fund 26% minimum match for each segment of the pathway as we move forward.
So, 26% match on a million-dollar mile. You're looking at, you know, close to 300,000 with engineering or whatever, probably, with doing a mile, but.
Yeah, and we've been lucky, like, with the Dort Highway pathway, we were able to get, you know, we just got shot down from MDOT, but we were able to get the Metropolitan Planning Commission that local TAP grant funds to keep moving it forward. You know, thank goodness for Ascension Genesis and donating the property and making that easement available. Thanks to Genesee County Road Commission for working with us, putting this together, because again, there was a huge wetlands mitigation as part of that project, and if we didn't get this planned as part of the Dort Highway extension, there's no way we were ever gonna have that run through there, because it would have been prohibitively expensive to come up with our own wetlands mitigation plan to put a pathway through. Same thing with Dort Highway and the DDA, you know, being able to combine federal dollars and DDA funds, and you guys are gonna have a little conversation about that later in this agenda, but for them to say, yeah, they would also be interested in extending the pathway down, we've gotta take advantage of the dollars wherever we can get them, because there's no way in your budget that you can afford to set aside, you know, a million dollars out of a $16 million general fund to just do pathways every year. It's just not feasible.
So, you know, we mentioned a million dollars a mile, but when we look at, you know, what probably would be the next phase, I don't know, there's a couple of them, you know, Balden Road may have an opportunity there, but going from Dort Highway down Cook Road to Embry, and Embry to Dort, we've heard from some of the funders that, you know, that would rate highly because we're connecting a pathway to an existing pathway, right, or two existing pathways, connecting them together. But one of the dilemmas we have with Cook Road right before Embry is we have an overpass there, and it's a pretty old overpass, and pushing back one of the walls underneath to be able, they did it in Davison on Irish Road, I believe it is. Is it an Irish, or?
Yeah.
Is it an Irish that they did it?
Yeah.
Pushed back the side walls so that they could put a pathway through there, and that's similar to what we would have to do. In 2024, Cook Road is scheduled, is 2024?
Yep.
To be rebuilt from Embry to Holly Road, and it's gonna be dug out and completely replaced, is the plan. And that would be a great time to be able to work on that overpass, because probably part of, a good part of the road's gonna be closed down anyways. So, that might be a natural timeframe there for that section of the pathway, but as Dennis mentioned, Genesis donated a lot of the property for the pathway along Dort, along Embry. I don't know if there's enough right-of-way from the road to be able to go down it, but we may have some right-of-way we have to seek there, too, right?
We're gonna probably have to purchase some easements through some of that area, and that would really be the next step for us. If the board approves and says, yeah, we're moving in the right direction on a non-motorized pathway plan, is we'll start to put aside the money to get the engineering completed on Embry and Cook. That's gonna include looking at the number of easements we need, which is the best way to run it on the west side of the road or the east, you know, probably west, then what easements are we gonna need? Which places would be willing to grant us that easement for pathway purposes without remuneration? Which ones are gonna come back and, you know, and we're probably gonna have to buy some sort of easement off them? Working with Road Commission on it, obviously, if we're gonna be out, you know, anywhere within the right-of-way. So, there's a lot goes into just that preliminary design work, but that would be our next step, is to set aside money, go after that. We gotta have that done before we can go after grants, because we have to be able to show them that we have a plan, that it's feasible, that we, you know, have a complete plan, we've got funding sources, and we start putting it all together. That's what we did with Dort, that's what we've done with other pathways. You start lining up your funding, you start looking for the grants. Now that we have the cell phone tower issue taken care of out at Bicentennial Park, you know, that's no longer an issue. It allows us to go after those DNR grants, SAM and RTF grants. That's huge, because before, we got shut out of that money all the time, and they will participate with these, but we had that cell tower issue, and until we were able to mitigate that, we just couldn't move forward. We got kicked out, we couldn't get enough points. You know, Director Linehan went after that, found a workable solution, and it's opened up a new round of funding for us. So, that's great news, because we can apply for that grant every year. April 1st, we can go after it every single year, see what we can fund. Will they fund it every year? I don't know, but they wouldn't fund it at all until we got it taken care of. So, we're in a better place now than we were a year ago.
So, would you think that that would be the next step, is that Cook, Embry to Grand Blank Road?
Absolutely. It's the next one that we have listed as a priority in our plan. It's been a priority in our plan for a number of years. When we first put this together and started to put the priority together and on that map that was in your packet, you know, we showed the Dort Highway. Obviously, the priority is to get the connector there. There is a trailhead on the Dort, new Dort pathway, so you got a place where people can park, jump on bikes, or walk and use the pathway. Right now, it would go to Genesis Trails, but eventually, you know, it's gotta go connect to somewhere. We need it to connect to Grand Blank Road.
Yes, Mr. White?
I am in total support of this. We'd all like more pathways, of course, but as Dennis mentioned, you know, we've only got so much money to deal with, but I think this plan makes a whole lot of sense. Look, we've got a path on Grand Blank Road, we've got a path on Dort, and it only makes sense to go down Embry to link them, and the sooner the better. But obviously, we have to wait till the process, you know, develops financially, but I like it a lot. I used to live right there, and I would have used it, but I live close by, and I can see me using it. You know, we get, there's so much discussion on pathways for us in Grand Blank Township, and I think we have a better system of pathways than any other jurisdiction in Genesee County. Tell me one that does more than what we do. We do a lot, and this is only moving in that direction to do even more, so I'm very much in favor of this.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes. Do we have a dollar value associated with how much we've already done in terms of the costs, general ballpark, or?
I could get that number for you, but I don't wanna shoot that out there now.
Okay, okay. If it requires some research, just bring the facts back, the information back to me at your convenience. Thank you.
I think, you know, the pathways, I think we all know the benefits of them, but, you know, they, I believe- know, they, I believe that they will attract people to our community as well as businesses, and I think we're, the Dort Highway path is going to, I believe when people see it, it's going to excite some people over what the whole pathway idea is about. You know, you see people in other communities where, I'll take, for example, down in the Chelsea area, Chelsea, Michigan area, the pathways there, I'm not sure where they're getting the funding, it's probably county funding, but, I mean, just miles and miles, but you see people riding and walking in all ages, taking advantage of it, and it'd be great to have our community be known for their pathways. It's going to take us a few years, but I think we, we're at the stage in our development where we are built out quite a bit, but we do have a lot of areas that are still yet to be built out, that we can still put the pathways in. And I think we're going about it in the right process, and that Dort, we had to do it when we did it, when it got done. And I think the connection to Grand Blank Road has got to get done next, just because we're going to be rebuilding Cook Road. The Balden Road, it'd be nice if the state came to us and said, or the feds, and said, we're going to do something with that overpass, now that we're widening the road, and we have at least one industrial park underway there, and a lot more business coming. So, beyond Cook Road, I don't know, what do you think, Dennis, in terms of the next step?
So, I think...
After Cook and Embry.
You know, if you look what's spelled out in our pathway plan, it would be Baldwin Road, you know, eventually getting Baldwin Road to Saginaw as the next step. We also still working on that Ironbell Trail connector. That got delayed a little bit, but that is going to come in from Atlas Township and come up Perry to Whitetail Drive soon. That will be part of that connector that's going to come out, you know, once we, if we get Baldwin Road done, or we start looking at going up Dort Highway as part of that Ironbell Trail from Grand Blank Road, that connection there, that would be, you know, the next priority. And again, one of the things that we want to focus on is make sure, and especially working with the Grand Blank Grid folks too, or any other volunteer groups that are interested in seeing us move through this, is that we have a focused approach and we go after it. That doesn't mean we won't take advantage of opportunities when they arise, much like we did with the Dort Highway extension. They're building that in, that was the time to change our priority and build Dort, because we had the economy of scale, we had the opportunity to take advantage of that. We will certainly look at that as we go through this plan, but I think you have to, you know, put up a plan and stick to it, understand your engineering dollars go first, you put your design engineering work. Once you've got that, now you can start building your grant funding requests and putting the dollar amount together to get it completed. But keeping a focused approach, it's tough when you, and I know there's some enthusiastic members of Grand Blank Grid who go, you know, what about Grand Blank Road? You should do this one now, or you should do this one now. If we keep jumping and trying to move and pave shoulders and do things, we lose focus on our plan, we stop working it, we're not putting our money aside, we're not working our plan. Much like the strategic plan we put together, and you look at what the board has accomplished in, you know, less than two years together, because you've been working on that strategic plan. We put a plan out, we said, this is what we're going to do, and then we go do it. This is what we're proposing to do with this, is be, is to attack this thing strategically, put our plan together, put our priorities together, shift them if we need to, because an opportunity has arisen, but stay really focused on our plan, and then start putting the timeline together. This one will be built in 2024, this one will be built in 2026, so that we can show people and keep that enthusiasm level up, because volunteers are really hard to come by, and when you've got a group of people who are interested, and you guys know I came from Marquette, we've got hundreds of miles of bike trails up there. It took us 30 years to build those. I mean, they are absolutely amazing, but I was there from the beginning when we just only rode on old hike trails, and what has occurred up there, it literally was a 30-year process and a tremendous amount of volunteer effort to make it happen. It still is today. And so, we can, we can make this vision a reality, but we also have to understand the reality behind it is to do it strategically, put a timeline together, and then get as much funding as you possibly can from outside sources.
I think with a solid plan too, the fundraising becomes a little bit more focused as well, so that, you know, groups that want to raise money, or even individuals or corporations that say, hey, we want to do something for the community. We have a plan that is printed and shows our prioritization of what we're doing next, and who knows what company may move here next that says, hey, we want to do something for the community while we're moving here. And they decide, hey, you know, we want to build, we want to sponsor this section of the pathway. And I think, so it's important for that as well. So, I think we've got a solid plan. I think, you know, our board probably has a consensus. If somebody wanted to make a motion, they'd be fine with me too, but...
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion.
That we go with the priorities that Mr. Limada outlined?
Mm-hmm. Is that in order?
Sure, absolutely. Somebody supporting it?
Motion to affirm existing priorities.
Correct.
As far as, as far as the non-motorized pathways are concerned, to affirm, affirm the current plan. Okay, motion by Fike?
Supported by Hugo.
Supported by Hugo. All righty. Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, under Item C, road funding policy, and just on the non-motorized pathway, we look forward to see folks from the Grand Blank Grid, and we appreciate your support for the plan. Okay. One thing I just want to mention is Atlas Township is building their pathway right now along Gale Road, I think it's Gale, but they've, they've got construction going right now, in fact. So, it's headed this direction. So, connect on Perry Road, and you'll be able to go from East Middle School all the way out to the high school out there and...
It was one of the issues of the delay is because it went to that old sidewalk, which was like two foot wide or whatever, and it wasn't acceptable as a connector for the pathway.
Right. Yeah, the Dort, Dort pathway is going to be phenomenal. I see people out there even now on, on part of it that's finished, so... Okay, Item C, road funding policy amendment review. Mr. Limada?
We had this conversation on June 14th meeting about possible amendments to the current road funding policy. DPS Director Jeff Sears wanted to ask the board if the board would consider board-initiated road projects. This has been discussed prior with other boards and not moved forward, and one of the things we discussed was, when would you be able to make that decision? Is it when it hits a Paser rating of two or less? Is it something that we should consider as a township? Mr. Sears went through it, Mr. Laddie has gone through it. What you had included in your packet was a redlined copy that, so you could see the changes, which were discussed by Mr. Sears and Mr. Laddie. I did look through it. I think it moves us in that direction, if that is indeed the direction the board wants to go. I don't know if we're getting closer to what the board would like to see, or if we're, if we're on the right track. Once you've had the opportunity to look at this, be happy to answer any questions, Mr. Sears, Mr. Laddie, myself, on how that would be initiated, whether it's a policy that you guys are prepared to pursue, and we want to provide more feedback. We're moving towards adoption of this policy, if it still is an idea that the board appreciates.
So, as you mentioned, Mr. Limada, this is a policy, so this isn't necessarily an ordinance that would require two readings or what have you.
Correct.
I think we discussed that we like this idea.
Yeah.
And I think we want to go in this direction, whether...
Yes.
Whether or not the wording is exactly the way that everybody wants it, you know, I don't know if everybody's spent a lot of time with the document yet, but my, my feeling is that we, we've kicked this thing around for years. I had a meeting with the other township supervisors and the road commission, and we discussed this issue. I'll tell you, you know, quite frankly, there were people that were concerned that it's very controversial, that you might draw the ire of some people. But as I think Mr. Limada and anybody else who's been here for a while will tell you, Mr. Laddie, we draw the ire of people, even once a resident initiated Special Assessment District. So, at any given Special Assessment District, we probably end up with, you know, we, 51% of the people signing and probably 40% against it, so the bottom line is, we're going to have people against it either way we go. But the problem is, is that our roads are failing in so many subdivisions. We saw the report from the Genesee County Road Commission that while Grand Blank Township has the most, I mean, by a long stretch, the most subdivision streets, and the oldest, and in the poorest condition, they aren't going to get any better just by us leaving them. And when a resident has to go out and get 200 signatures, we can't even find people to run for office that'll get 100 signatures to get on the ballot, let alone getting, you know, 200 people to sign a petition saying that, you know, they want to spend however many thousand dollars to fix their street. So, I think it's an enormous hurdle that we're putting out there for residents to have to jump to be able to get their streets paved. I'm hearing from residents that, you know, the township needs to do something. Well, the only thing we do is finance the things and initiate the Special Assessment District. County owns the roads, we know that whole story, but I believe that we have to do something, is my thought. And we aren't going to do this on every street in the township, but I believe, you know, as we mentioned before, if this was a health crisis in terms of water, where it was lead pipes or flooding of basements, we would say, hey, this is a health concern, we need to address this and create a Special Assessment District. Just so happens, it's streets and roads, and we've kind of all kind of accepted that we have horrible streets, right? Well, a horrible street in one neighborhood, I think reflects on the whole township eventually, because as we know, the homes kind of tend to lack a lot of attention when the street starts to fall apart, and it just kind of slowly decays, and I would like to see us prevent that from happening in our township. Mr. Laddie?
Mr. Chair, just to your comment, throughout this process, Mr. Limada, Mr. Sears, and I discussed, the idea of trying to make it is, is clear and easily, and make it very easy for residents to participate in this process. And really, what we did was, was we built in two safety valves. The first one is the Paser rating. You have to have a Paser rating of two before you're even eligible for the board to move forward with this, in addition to a finding that there's public health and safety concerns. Secondly, we, we built in an additional public hearing. I call it a public hearing, it's not necessarily, you know, when we have a Special Assessment District, there are two required public hearings. They require notification in the paper, first-class mail to the residents. We built in a third hearing, and we call it a public hearing, because we want to go through the notice requirements for this meeting. We haven't decided if the township board would, would be the moderator of the meeting or not, but really what it does is it officially brings, it notices the residents that this project is, is being considered. It sends them each notice, we notice it in the paper, they come in, we talk about the potential project. We also talk about, we let them know about the state safety valve of that 20% petition requirement, and we get that out of the way before you actually make a resolution to proceed with the district. So, we're giving everybody a lot of notice, giving them a lot of time, and so I think you've really softened any sort of surprise or any element of, of, well, everyone has an opportunity to address this issue, they even have the opportunity to veto it with that petition. So, I think you've done a really good job in, in making it as fair as you can make it.
Any thoughts? Ms. Hugo?
I just have a question. Excuse me. I think it was two meetings ago, when, or maybe three, when the Genesee County Road Commission was here, and they were starting to get estimates together, or there were some residents who were requesting estimates. Do you know if they ever came through with those?
I think there's quite a few that want estimates right now, right?
There's a lot. There's still a bunch out there, good evening, by the way. There's still a bunch out there that we're waiting for, but they have produced quite a few. So, and those residents, I'm getting the petitions for them so that they can start circulating those. I don't want those petition drives to be held up by this process, because we don't want to rush this, and I want them to collect signatures while they can, but, yeah, we've gotten some of them that they've requested.
Okay. Clerk Robertson?
Yes. I appreciate the update. This is not listed on the agenda as an action item for this evening. Am I understanding that correctly?
I put it on the agenda only as a...
Informational?
Amendment review, because I wasn't sure, I didn't want to presume to put the, to put a motion in place, because I don't know if, if you're prepared to adopt it at this juncture, if you want to look at it and approve the changes as presented, ask us for additional information, or keep the policy as it currently was and move forward. So, you have options.
Right, and I, and I think that was wise, so I support your actions in that regard. My, first of all, to Supervisor Bennett, I think it is to your great credit that you want to tackle an issue, this is, requires a leadership on an issue that is a tough one. There's a lot of problems with our roads and their subdivisions, and it's, it's, like I say, to your credit that you want to address the issue. But let's not get away from the fact that we're, if we adopt a different policy, we are moving away from 50% plus one as the threshold. We're lowering the threshold for this to take place now. Obviously, it requires board action, and we're answerable, obviously, to our constituencies at the appropriate time when, when we run for office, and so people can draw their judgments at that time. But, but I, as I'm considering the policy, I'm saying, is there something that we can do, and maybe some of what Attorney Laddie has outlined is intended for this purpose, is to bring greater attention to the, the rating of these worst, worst neighborhoods to try and secure that 51%. Because, and the reason I say that is because, you know, in the way our system works, 50% plus one, although people might grumble, they can't argue with it, because that's how our system works. A majority, majority of the residents are majority of the, of the property holders, property owners in a particular, in a particular areas, particular district. And so, our goal, our ultimate goal is to get the worst, worst neighborhoods and draw their attention to say, look, it's not going to get any cheaper, you need to act now, we need to encourage you to act now, and, and so on. But are we prepared to set up a separate mechanism whereby it's a vote of the board rather than the 50% plus one? Even granted, granted, there, there's a 20% veto, you're, you're setting a low veto threshold for it, but we're still nevertheless, you know, we're, we're changing the threshold for the imposition of a fee on all of the residents there, and that's a serious matter. So, I'm glad the issue's not up for a vote tonight, but I do, I, I, this is what, these are, as I read it, as I read my packet earlier, earlier this week, and knew that we were going to have this conversation, these were the thoughts that came to my mind.
I appreciate your charitableness, Clerk Robertson, and I appreciate that, your comments. I think, you know, this is the accept, I look at this as allowing for an exception. You know, right now, our policy doesn't allow, really, it doesn't speak to this anyway. We could do it, but it doesn't speak to it. I see this as an emergency or a relief valve to those communities that want to have a street paved, but nobody's willing to go out and get, you know, 150, 200 signatures to get it done, but yet everybody's like, oh my gosh, you know. I also see this as a safety issue. When it gets down to a one, you know, we, maybe when we go out in a couple of weeks on a, on our drive with the board, maybe we'll go down a couple of streets that are some ones, and we can see what kind of street people are driving down. It's not just the residents that live on that street, it's our emergency vehicles, it's Mr. Sears DPS workers that are taking their plows down there and beating them to smithereens. It's, it's a lot of other considerations besides just, yeah, I got a crappy-looking street. It's, hey, we've got some, some health concerns or safety concerns with, with some of these streets, and when they reach that level, we, we need to have a mechanism for addressing that. And right now, you know, while one exists out there, it's not part of our policy. I don't see this becoming the norm, that we're going to do this with every neighborhood. It might, as Mr. Laddie said, and I would like to review this a little bit more, and maybe even have a committee that goes through it, but, you know, as Mr. Laddie said, the public hearing or what we're talking about, you know, maybe it's a neighborhood or two that we bring in and say, hey, you know, we're considering your neighborhood for this, because guess what? We've had a number of residents complain about... We've had a number of residents complain about the streets in your neighborhood. They have a Paser rating of one, and they're a safety hazard for our police, our fire, you know, everybody.
If I may, Mrs. Supervisor, just interject. We're, I think that that's a very good idea to add a drive-through some of these neighborhoods as part of the excursion that we're gonna be doing on, what is it, the twenty, twenty-eighth?
Yes.
Okay, I think that would be a welcome addition.
Okay. Yes, Sarah or Ms. Hugo?
Okay. As a resident who went through this process, the current Special Assessment District process that we have, it was a nightmare for us. It took us ten years to, between two different attempts to get individuals to sign the petitions. And as mentioned before, my husband and I, twenty-four hours over a summer, you know, we spent, nobody has time for that. So I would love to see a change in the policy to make it easier for residents, because there are a lot of awful roads in our township.
Clerk Raridan?
I guess I'm looking at this and I'm seeing that fifty percent plus one can still submit a petition. I mean, that doesn't mitigate, this policy doesn't mitigate that. They, so this would only be used as a failsafe.
Right.
So, I mean, I was gonna, I was gonna say that, make a motion to approve the wording, but I mean, I'm happy to hold off, but because I think we, this just protects the township and the citizens. And we're not gonna willy-nilly go say we're gonna replace your road.
Right. Mr. White?
Yes, I, I'm in support of it, but perhaps maybe we split this into two separate things, where we have one where we just make our modifications to the existing and then have a new. Then, if you just want us to keep it with the new changes, you can still vote no. Which I'm voting yes either way, but that might kind of split the baby here a little bit.
I don't understand, Mr. White.
So, I mean, at least the way it's written in here is there's the citizen initiative part, and then there's the township initiated, initiated part. Just, you wanna vote on the modifications to the existing policy in one, and then have a separate one to implement this new township initiated plan, and then we could kind of
Like two separate policies, we've got, yeah. Mr. White?
I'm in favor of this, and I think we should move to approve it. I understand what Dave is saying, but Sarah, you know, we don't wanna wait ten years to fix these roads. And the problem is, it's such a cumbersome process, that if we could streamline it a little bit, give the residents ample time to object, and you know, if we get people coming in here and saying, no way, we can't afford this, we're not gonna do it, okay. Then we can always say, vote and say no, right?
Yeah.
But given your safety concerns, given the length of time it's taken, I think we should move forward.
What I like to do is to build consensus with our board, right? I wanna make sure that Clerk Robertson's concerns are addressed, you know, and so what I would ask this board is that we vote on it at the next meeting. What I would like to do in the meantime is have a meeting with any board member that would like to join, including Clerk Robertson, myself, and Mr. Laddie, Mr. Leamina, and Mr. Sears, and just go through it one last time. See if there's any concerns that maybe Clerk Robertson or myself have, and anybody else that's on here would like to have. And we address those, and we bring it back next board meeting, ready to have a consensus on voting on it.
Fine.
Does that sound acceptable, Clerk Robertson?
Sounds fine to me. I mean, I appreciate the, you know, the deliberative nature of the issue.
Okay, was that acceptable, everyone, that we do that then? Okay, very good. Okay, item eight, the board will hear an update on the auditorium remodel, and you know, I've gotta say, everybody that I've heard from that's walked into this room in the last twenty-four hours has said, wow, our branding committee led by Ms. Robertson, our executive coordinator, looks fabulous, just
Yeah.
Really raises the bar. So congratulations, and to your old team, Melissa.
Welcome to your new boardroom.
Very nice, very nice.
So we were trying to figure out today about how many years they've, since there's been a complete remodel in here. And we couldn't really, we asked old, there are employees who have been here for many, many years, and we're thinking it's somewhere around thirty years since the boardroom has had a
More than that, I've represented this community for thirty-two years, on and off, and I don't remember the boardroom looking anything like, you know, anything other than what it was before this remake. So it's more than thirty years, it's probably four, maybe forty.
What do you think, Mr. Laddie?
Since I've been, I've been sitting up here since nineteen ninety-two, and it's looked the same until today, frankly.
It was, it was well overdue.
Yes.
And like the pathways, a plan was formed, and so built up the money in the capital fund, and then we were able to completely remodel. So just a few things that you might not have even noticed that were done. The ceiling tiles were all replaced. These can lights were all replaced, all the recessed lighting up here, and new LED lights were put in those. Was that LED, was that done prior to that?
Yes.
Yes, okay, the other, okay. We cut the concrete here in the conference room A, so that the cords were, we don't have the trip hazard that we had before. So that's all built into the floor now. The dais that you're looking at right, or that you're looking at right now was completely demolished. And this gentleman right here, Brian, he, it was his idea, he was very hesitant to say that we should completely demolish the dais, because he was the one who was gonna have to do the work on this. I'm not kidding you, you guys had your last board meeting in here last time, and the very next day, this was completely gone. Completely gone, and I think it was every single person in the DPW department was in this room, taking things off the walls and doing the demo. So I was kind of bummed, because I really wanted to take some of those slats off the dais, but it was already done by the time I got in here. They built this extension over here, so Superintendent Leaminta and our attorney David Laddie are not sitting at a, you know, it's an eight-foot plastic table anymore, so that's, that's great news. Brian built a ramp over here. We have new executive chairs that you're sitting in, new chairs for our audience. The walls are freshly painted with a new color. We have new carpeting, our stone accent wall, do you guys like that?
Very nice.
New sign, we had our, a lot of electrical wiring and AV installation done. We have a new TV, we had to have a nice slim TV, and of course, bigger, because that's always better, back here. And then we had some drywall over here, and the four mica on the dais in the countertops. So all of that was done. What you still have to come are new doors that are ordered and should be installed sometime in August. Handrails over on our ramp. We have a new podium coming, this was borrowed from the police department tonight. We have a new coat rack coming that will match the material on the dais. Some new conference room chairs for conference room A. We have some new Grand Blanc Township flags that are coming. And we are really hoping to have a fantastic new mission statement, and we would love to put that back on our wall back here. And then, of course, our board picture that we took tonight will be over on this wall over here. And we accomplished this all, barring any unknown expenses, under budget. What do you have to say, Mr. Boggs?
So when we started this, it was in the budget, as Melissa was saying. We had a meeting in here, you know, we had an idea of, well, let's keep the existing thing, you know, I brought Brian in here and, you know, just for advice, you know, what contracts you know, and he stepped up and went to bat and did a heck of a job. And he's done a fabulous job on many other projects here, including the Parks and Rec addition. I think Director Linahan brought you guys up to speed on that last week, him and the crew leader of Big Rascal. Were instrumental in that additional renovation out there, but stand-up guy, he's done a heck of a job. Very proud to have him a part of our department, so is Director Sears, and this couldn't happen without him.
Yeah, yeah.
And don't like Assistant Director Boggs, or DPS, DPW Director Boggs, he obviously had a lot to do with this.
And Brian Olf with our DPW department as well, and Greg Boggs, just for the public, so you know who everybody is. And Melissa Roberts, our executive coordinator, but I saw the process happening, and the day after, this was gone. But they did, Brian did save some pieces, and reused things, some things, and reconditioned them, so wherever they could be. But I've gotta say, one of the things that you probably don't, the public doesn't see, is that before, there was all kinds of legs sticking down from this that made it so that, for the different meetings that we have in here, we have Planning Commission that has, you know, a few more people. We've got ZBA with a few less people, and lots of different sized groups that meet up here. But with those legs, it made it nearly impossible to arrange. The other thing is that all the cords connect, the only plugs we had were a few plugs underneath, and we had wires running everywhere, and with some of the electronics, it's kind of, you know, a problem when some of that stuff gets bumped. So now everything is up here, and the other thing is hides any snacks and beverages that people have, and all the wires too, so. But, you know, I think the expenditure for this, and, you know, the great part is that our team, our DPW team here, did a fabulous job of keeping as much of it in-house as possible and doing it. This was a huge project, and, but it says something about our township. The people that we have come to these meetings are prospective businesses that want to move here, prospective developers that come before our Planning Commission. And this is the front door to our township for many, for many people that come in here. And it speaks volumes when they come in and they see a room that is something they can be proud of. I think it was overdue, and it definitely represents our residents and our businesses well, to have a room like this that we can all be proud of. So congratulations, you guys, on doing a fabulous job, and this will probably be another thirty years before it's redone, but it'll look great. Ms. Leamina?
Mr. Supervisor, we had, again, I just wanna point out that we adopted, putting together a capital improvement plan back in two thousand and sixteen, and said, you know, we're gonna have a multi-year plan out for seven years, and it continues to roll every year. The board looks at it and adopts it with every annual budget that we do, the capital improvement plan is a part of that, and it's always a seven-years rolling plan. This has been part of our plan for a number of years, recognizing the fact that, I mean, we're getting ready to build the new facilities with DPS and fire out of necessity, but recognizing the fact that the administrative side of our operation is gonna be in this building for the foreseeable future. And so we had to do some upgrades, and it's been a long part of a plan, and it was, hadn't been touched in anywhere in a number of years. If you start to look back over the last few years and following that capital improvement plan, it's, you know, doing things like upgrading, getting the painting done, you know, fixing some offices, getting carpeting in where there was just old tile floors. We slowly but surely changed the look of the business, and we've done it with, again, strategically, looking how much money can we spend every year, knowing that this was gonna be a big one, it waited for a long time. But last year, we accomplished putting the new glass out through all of the public areas, all of the key card doors. If you look at just the amount of security that we've done in the building, you know, last but not least, you know, we knew this was a big project, and it took a while. I also just wanna highlight the fact that Melissa Roberts, our executive coordinator, if you guys recall, last year, she was selected to go through the Michigan Municipal League Women in Leadership for Municipal Management, and this was a big project for Melissa to take on, and this was really her baby. It was like, you know, put this thing together, we have a budget that's been approved in capital projects, what can we accomplish within that budget? And working with DPW Assistant Director, Mr. Boggs, with Brian, and thank God we have Brian, he's a service technician in your DPW, but he's obviously a very multi-talented guy who has come through time and time again for the township. It saves us a tremendous amount of money from having to use outside contractors. But I just hats off to the three of them especially, and there were other people who worked on it. But, you know, hats off, Melissa really did a great job of managing this project for her first big project for the township. Greg was always there, he's our go-to guy anytime we're looking at something like this. But Brian, thank you, because you really made, you got the finishing touches. Your vision really helped pull this thing together, so thank all three of you.
And for those of you that missed it, we had an official ribbon cutting before the meeting, so. Okay, moving on to item B, the board will consider Resolution twenty-two dash fourteen for the approval of the Michigan Liquor Control Commission's special license application for the Ally Challenge on August twenty-second through the twenty-eighth of this year, twenty twenty-two. Motion to approve. Okay. Support by Mr. White.
Motion by Fike.
Support by
Supported by White.
Yes.
Okay, Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes, Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Item C, with regret, the board will consider a motion to accept the notice of intent to retire effective August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, from Chief of Police Ron Wiles after twenty-six years of exemplary service to the residents of Grand Blanc Township. It saddens me to have to say that, but I'm excited for Chief Wiles' future, and you know, we appreciate so much your years of service as chief, but also here as one of our officers too. And, you know, the tone that our police set in this community is well-known through the county and the state as being a favorable one. And while we are low-crime areas because we, you know, do the community policing like you, Chief, promote, and you, your officers are active in every aspect of this community, not just in Grand Blanc Township, but throughout the county. And so I know that Mr. Leamina has been hard at work putting some things in place to be able to work on a replacement, but we congratulate you and wish you all the best too. Mr. Leamina?
So I can just provide an update for the board before you move on to make a motion to accept his notice of intent to retire, is that I did send out five RFPs for recruiting firms. Two of them let us know that they were just absolutely too busy to take on another recruitment at this time. But these are five high-quality firms that are focused on recruiting for the public sector. And I do have three who have accepted, two of the proposals are in, I'm just waiting on the last one. We'll review all the proposals, vet that, and move that for you at your next meeting for acceptance of of one of those recruiting firms to move us forward. I think that Gov HR, Strategic Government Resources, Walsh Municipal Consultants are the three that have been affirmative, wanting to put in an RFP for the recruiting process. All very excellent firms that have tremendous amount of experience in this. We are gonna be a very attractive landing spot for somebody. We expect to see a great deal of interest in the position. Unless you guys vote no to accept the motion of the resignation, and we keep Ron here for the remainder of his contract for another three years.
Make the motion to adjourn.
What happens if we do vote no?
Yeah, right.
It's kind of like an indentured servitude thing, Rod, I
Okay, well.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
To accept.
Okay. Motion by Clerk Raridan.
Okay.
Support by Fike.
Supported by Fike. Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
With regret, yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Okay, wish to speak, chief at all. I didn't, I didn't warn you of this.
Okay. Wish to speak, Chief, at all. I didn't, I didn't warn you of this, but I think only appropriate that I offer.
You guys got me already. Um, I owe a lot to Grand Blank Township. The opportunities I've been given because of my association with this township are immense, and certainly I will not forget. Last six years as, as Chief of Police, just wasn't experience. You know, I happened to work with a group of dedicated professionals who day in and day out are committed to providing a superior level of service for this community. When I became chief, I wanted to do two, three, three, three things. Develop well-rounded officers, create a strong cohesive police department, and create outstanding relationships with our residents, business leaders, and community stakeholders. And I'm very confident in saying that with the help of a lot of people, we were able to accomplish that. Special thanks to Supervisor Bennett, Superintendent Leamina. We faced some challenges over the last six years. We've had many more successes. So thank you to all the elected officials. You've always supported the police department. Greatly appreciated. The men and women next door know that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Red. It'll be a very difficult search. I'm confident of that. And I know that you're going to do great things for our state. I'm not sure it's public yet what you're going to be doing, but I believe, you know, your move is going to benefit all of us. So we appreciate your continued service too, to the residents of our county, our community and the state as well. So, and I'm going to have to find a new deputy supervisor too, because in the past years, actually, I appointed Chief Wiles as my deputy supervisor. So anyways, that just tells you how much I trusted him to help us through some challenging times. So you will be missed. Okay. Item D, the board will consider a motion to approve eight catch basin repairs for 2022 estimated at $33,000, authorize township supervisor to execute all agreements.
Motion to approve.
Okay. All right.
Support.
Motion by Fike, supported by Hugo. Okay. Trustee Fike.
Yes.
Trustee White.
Yes.
Trustee Hugo.
Yes.
Trustee Raridan.
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing. Motion passes.
See, Director Sears, we have all of us educated on what that whole thing is about from, from doing this each year. I'm not sure the public knows what catch basin repairs, but we basically pay 50% for catch basins to be repaired. The other 50% is paid for by the county. Item E, the board will consider a motion to approve the ordering of water main materials for Grand Blank Enterprise Park in the amount of $339,273.32 for Michigan Pipe and Valve and authorize the township superintendent to execute all related documents. Mr. Sears?
You'll have to listen to me talk on this one. So this is kind of an unconventional way for us to complete a project. As you all know, Grand Blank Enterprise Park over on Baldwin Road across from the Future Tech Village site is under construction. The developer has took up that project and it's moving along pretty quickly. The township and the Township DDA has committed to putting in the water and sewer infrastructure through Enterprise Park along the roadways. And then the developments within the industrial park will connect to that infrastructure. Right now, there's a great deal of backlog and trouble in our water and sewer industry with water main pipe and fittings because of the iron market. We can't get it right now. In some cases, there's a 60-week lead time on it. That's, for a project like this that's moving so quickly, it's just not acceptable. So working with the developers of Enterprise Park, we have went out for bids on the materials so we can order them now. We have not gone out for bid on the construction of the project yet because the plans are still being finalized, permitted to the county and the state. It happens that one of our local suppliers was already working with the developer, and they happen to have all the pipe and the fittings in their yard ready for delivery. So we're kind of very lucky on this. Otherwise, it could be next year before some of these businesses could get up and running, and that is not the goal of the developer. They want some of these buildings open by the winter. So before you tonight, as a proposal to purchase the water main, we did go out for bid, received three bids back from local companies that, you know, are reputable and could supply these. One company cannot get the pipe, so they did not bid for it. So we disqualified them. The other company was lower than the company that we are recommending, but they can't get the pipe for 60 weeks or so. So that's problematic for us. The price difference wasn't that much, so we decided to recommend Michigan Pipe and Valve for the purchase of the materials.
Okay.
I'll make the motion, Supervisor.
Support.
Support by Dr. Raridan.
Motion by Robertson, supported by Raridan.
I just, I want to make a comment here.
Yes, Mr. Supervisor.
With regard to this project, I just, just so the public knows, you know, we put in this water main sewer, what have you. And you notice, you know, the cost. I know we've had other discussions on this, but we get paid back for this over usage over the years. So if, you know, these developments want to go to a well eventually, these are the costs that we're incurring, that we're investing. And that's the cost that we're going to be recouping over the years. And that's why we don't allow for wells to go in after we've gone, footed the bill for putting in water. So this is a perfect example. I'm just pointing out, being that it's in front of us right now, that we get paid back by continued use of water over the next 30, 40 years or longer. So, okay, there's a motion second. Any further discussion?
Okay, go ahead.
Trustee White.
Yes.
Trustee Raridan.
Yes.
Trustee Fike.
Yes.
Trustee Hugo.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Treasurer Kilmer.
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Item F, the board will consider Resolution 22-15, authorizing reimbursement, reimbursement of expenses from bond proceeds. Mr. Leamina?
This is, has to do with moving forward for the bonding. As you know, the DDA has agreed to finance the Baldwin Road upgrade from the Dorde Highway project out to Ruby Street. We're in the process. The information's been sent to Bond Counsel and to the bonding agent. We're in the process of moving it forward. But we did get an invoice in already from the Road Commission. That project started about two or three weeks ago. And so the first invoice is here. What this resolution does is it protects the bonding that we can use the proceeds of the bonds to pay the general fund back as we pay those, that first invoice that comes through. And if we don't do that, we couldn't do it because it has to do with the Internal Revenue Code. This was, resolution was suggested by Bond Counsel. And David, is there anything that I'm missing?
Nope, you got it exactly right.
Okay. Any questions or concern? Okay, motion by Ms. Hugo. Okay.
Support by Dr. Raridan.
Motion by Hugo, supported by Raridan. Trustee Hugo.
Yes.
Trustee Fike.
Yes.
Trustee Raridan.
Yes.
Trustee White.
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing. Motion passes.
Thank you. Item G, the board will consider a motion to accept the 2022 and 2023 Senior Center Millage Budget and submittal to Genesee County. Now, we have with us Director Linehan for Parks and Rec.
Good evening.
Good evening. So before you, every year on the county's fiscal year, which is different than our fiscal year, there's, starts in October, we have to provide a budget for the Senior Center Millage. Every year through the millage, we get $1,996,505. So with this, this is an increase from what we voted on originally last year. If you remember, halfway through the year, we did get a bump up because for over 10 years, there was not an adjustment whatsoever. And all the senior centers in the county were having trouble recruiting employees and retaining staff. So they did bump it up. We are not seeing any increase this year in the funding. And actually, for about that 10 years, we were looking at, originally, that was less than what was voted on in the millage or when the millage came out. So this gets us closer to that. Originally, we were getting over $200,000 about 15 years ago. So as the economy went down, so did our revenue for the millage, but it has come up. So this right here, this is just going to the county with our line items on what is being reimbursed. A majority of our senior center budget does come from the millage, with some coming from Community Development Block Grant and rentals and fees that we charge.
So, yes, Mr. Fike.
Patrick, is the city of Grand Blank contribute to this too?
So the building's owned 50/50 by the township and the city. The city, through a Community Development Block Grant, through some of the money that they are given, comes back to us through that. But a majority of the operations are financed by the Genesee County Senior Services Millage.
So just, I know the answer to this, but for the public and the board, I'll ask it. The, the amount that we receive for funding from the county, is that tied to the amount that we collect?
Absolutely not. We bring over, through the taxable value in Grand Blank Township into the Senior Center Millage, we put in over $1 million.
So, and what'd you say we, we receive back?
Right now, we are at $195,505.
So we collect over a million. What is it, a million two roughly?
Yeah, I think.
It was $1,070,000. It'll be more this year coming around because the taxable value came up again. Last year was $1,070,000. That is raised by the millage from Grand Blank Township. Taxable value contributes $1,070,000 to the senior county overall budget.
And we get back $200,000.
Little less, but yeah.
Mr. Fike?
Is there anything we can do about that?
Um, I just want to set the stage. I have that same question too. And I asked Mr. Laddy to check on something for that. One more question though, Mr. Leamina, if I could. You said we received the same amount 15 years ago?
We received more. It was over.
Originally, when the millage passed, was each senior center, 15 of us, were given $200,000.
Come on up, Misty.
Yeah, so year one.
This is Misty Mullen. She is our Senior Center Coordinator, and she has been at
the Senior Center for how long?
18 years.
18 years.
Thanks for your service, so.
So originally, when the millage passed in 2005, each of the 15 senior centers were guaranteed $250,000. That's when the tax base fell. That didn't happen. We were originally given a blank check basically of $215,000 to do whatever we wanted with, with no reimbursement process. As you can imagine, certain centers caused problems, and that went into the reimbursement system. Right after that, we went down to 190, just over 190. We were 19650, I believe, is where we were. And then down to 17255.
So, so one of the, when you look at the Senior Center Millage, it's not just the senior centers that are getting this money. You do have service agencies, Bailey Center on aging, you know, Alzheimer's Association. There are multiple service agencies that get a slight bit higher. And over the years, the senior centers have gotten less while some of the other providers have gotten more.
So is there anything that looks at how many people use our senior center? I'm just thinking in terms of, is there anything based on usage? I got to believe that Grand Blank Township has quite a few seniors and.
So we do have a process for counting. We have a software system called My Senior Center. Each center has to have that installed. And so we track the number of people coming into the building and what services they come in for. And that's where our tiers are. There's three tier levels for the senior centers. Level three, which is the highest, level two. Prior to this increase, they were, when we were at 170, they were at 117. So about $67,000 difference there. And then, so for a level three center, we have to have 1,000 unduplicated people come through our doors between October 1 and March 31. Each person starts as a new person come that calendar year or that fiscal year coming up. And then in each category that we have to offer, health and fitness, education, nutrition, social services, volunteerism, we have benchmarks for each of those that we have to meet on a daily and a monthly basis. So on average, pre-pandemic, we were averaging, our unduplicate count was nearly 2,000. We were averaging between 60,000 and 70,000 participants per year coming through.
How do we stack up compared to others?
We were the top three.
The top three?
Yeah. So there's a couple centers that are a little bit larger than us. Davison has a little bit bigger center with more evening hours, weekend hours, and stuff like that. So that did boost them a little bit. But as far as meeting our benchmarks, we were always meeting them by second week of February when our due date was March 31.
Professor Robertson?
Yeah, just a quick question. The other communities that have senior centers, are any, do any of those have their own millages supporting them? I thought Schwartz Creek did.
Schwartz Creek at one time did prior to the Senior Services Millage being passed in 2005. They had, I think, six more years on it, and theirs was just to use as operational dollars, or building or whatever they wanted it for. The senior millage dollars can only be used for operational dollars at this time. And being a township, they actually did have a millage that they rescinded when the millage passed.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. So I'm just curious, and it sounds like, you know, I would, I would imagine that the number of people that attend the senior center participate is based kind of on the programming, right? And what you're saying is Davison has, is a little bit bigger just because, what, they have more programming or they fund more?
They don't have more, they have a little bit more programming, but they do like weekends and evening programming, or dances and more social things where the, our group doesn't. We tried it several times. They haven't tried it post the endemic, but it's just not something that was worth spending the money on the budget at that time. We were able to meet our numbers and exceed those numbers within our service hours.
So pretty much everybody gets the same amount of money, all the senior centers?
No, no. There are two tiers. Or there's actually three tiers.
But two of them are being used, correct?
Yeah, tier three and tier two. And it's based on those attendance levels. Although there is a new senior center that is now being funded in Monday Township. It's currently in, they're operating it out of ISD buildings with the thought of actually building the center. Now, one of the good things about the senior centers is when you become a member, it's a $10 membership, you can use that at any senior center in the county. So you take your My Senior Center badge and you can, and you can scan it. So, you know, if you have a senior in Davison Township that, you know, really likes the program that the Grand Blank Senior Center's putting on, you know, they come out there, they scan it, you know, that goes towards our numbers. So, you know, it's, it can be a cohesive system.
Mr. Fike?
So Misty, are you just scraping by over there? Are you okay financially?
We run a real tight budget. There just really isn't any wiggle room in that budget, unfortunately.
Yeah.
And having, you know, in years past, when we did have to take a cut, we had a fund balance that minimized the loss that we had. That fund balance is now being spent on a daily basis. So there's no saving grace.
Mr. Leamina?
I think one of the concerns, and last year, Misty, Patrick and I went to the county and met with a few of the county commissioners and had a conversation about the senior center funding and shared our concerns. I mean, going more than 10 years at $170,000 with no COLA increase, no nothing. And yet, you know our taxable value. We get it, that there was a recession, taxable value dropped out, everybody got hit. But it has been coming back up for the last six years, you know, certainly here and in other places in the county. And no COLA. You know what's happened to trying to be able to hire people. It's just impossible. And we weren't able to offer any increase in wages because the funding didn't come. We'd have to, Misty would have to create programs or generate her own revenue in order to try to. We'd have to, Misty would have to create programs or generate her own revenue in order to try to even get people on there, and it became impossible. After our meeting, they did come up with that 196, $196,505. But I'm disappointed that, you know, a year later, we're at 196,505 again. Everyone knows what happened into inflation and what we're going through right now. Our fuel costs are going to go up for operating the senior van. All of those things impact. Certainly, these people, in order for us to be competitive in the labor market, we have to be able to pay people who work down there. And so I think it's important for this board, I mean, we're going to have to approve this budget and move it forward because we need to get it approved, although there is opportunities for amendments later in the year. But I think it's important for this board to send a strong message to the, to the county board and, and to the senior services, is that there should be some type of look back on, on at least a COLA, some sort of an adjustment because we simply can't continue to operate where they lock us down for the next 10 years and they tell the senior directors like Misty, well, be creative, figure out, run more programs, get more rentals for your, you know, facility so that you can afford to pay your people more. We're giving them a raise because our millage rates are going up. I mean, our millage rate's the same, but our taxable value's gone up. So our taxable value is up 5.6%, 5.9% year over year. They got a 5.9% raise from the taxpayers of Grand Blank Township. Boy, I'd sure like to see a 5% raise come back to the budget that we're being handed, you know, being offered to us from the county senior services millage.
Mr. Fike?
So is this problem political? I mean, is this a matter of saying, hey, come on now?
I think it's important that we shine a light on it, because when we went down there last year, we said, you know, come on, 10 years, 10 years?
And we weren't the only municipality. There's another municipality that was in the conference room right before us.
Yes.
So, you know, this is, this is a, a problem for all the senior centers out there. And, you know, I, I feel that the service providers all provide something good in that out there. But, you know, it seems like, you know, they're, they're the special ones. They get, you know, they get the funding increases while all of our senior centers in the county, you know, are stuck to scramble by for, you know, for the.
It's a millage-driven revenue source. And as long as that is, as long as the taxable value is moving upwards, then more money's coming in. And it's, it shouldn't just go to the other service providers. It's got to come back to the actual people who are the first line in delivering those services. I mean, that's how I feel about it.
You know, that's one thing that Misty and the senior staff do, is they end up doing referral services. So, you know, they meet with the seniors, they figure out, you know, what their needs are and help push them to those service providers that, you know, they may not even know exist or the services that they offer.
And to add on to that, you know, a lot of the service providers use our buildings as their space to host their programs, whether it be fitness, education, grief support, different support groups. You know, they're getting funding but still using our building, you know, to offer their program where they get funding for, but we receive nothing in return for that other than being able to offer their programs.
And we subsidize the building as a township.
That message from you as a group of legislative officials to another group of legislative officials that say, we're paying attention to this, we're watching the taxable value grow. Make sure that you're not forgetting that we're still providing ultimately the services to those seniors at this level and that when we see that taxable value goes up, there certainly should be something coming back for that revenue.
Dr. Raridan?
I'm wondering, are they, do we know how much money they have left as a balance? Or are they squirreling the money away or?
So back, like 1920, we were told that there was, would not be enough fund balance to cover if another decrease came, that we would, the senior centers would take a cut. They don't do a cut across the board. It's either service providers or senior centers, and it has historically been the senior centers. We have not gotten an update on where the fund balance is, but there have been several new programs developed out of that fund balance, including funding the Monday Township Senior Center as well as a ramp program and a lawn care program that will only help a select group of people.
Right.
I can speak to the ramp program because at the Disability Network, we got some of those funds.
And they are much-needed programs, however, they're a small Band-Aid on the bigger picture.
Yeah.
But I think that when you just heard Misty say that they're going to start up a new senior center in Monday Township, perhaps one's needed there, I'm not going to dispute that, I don't have any knowledge about it. But it does mean that they've got additional funding enough to where they're starting up an additional senior center, but freezing the revenue for the current ones. Again, faced with the inflation that we're all faced with right now, I don't know that that was a wise choice.
The Monday Township Senior Center, for the rest of this fiscal year, or it runs through September 30th, received over $54,000. That is more than a quarter of what they should, like.
Yeah.
If you added up that times the four-year over $200,000 that they would have received in there.
And, sorry, Miss.
Clerk Robertson?
Monday Township has a population of 17,000 approximately?
Probably, yeah.
We have a population of?
39.
39, almost 40,000.
And we serve.
So their annualized figure would be more than ours?
We're getting 100.
How did they arrive at that conclusion?
I'm not sure. We were told in a Zoom meeting from the Office of Senior Services that the Monday Township Senior Center was in the works. We were not allowed to ask any questions because no details were going to be given. And then it was presented that it was approved, they were awarded $54,000 and change, and they would be opening their doors soon.
Thank you very much, Mr. Supervisor.
Treasurer Kilmer?
So basically, they can just come in and take our money?
Well, I asked Mr. Laddie to look at that question, Mr. Kilmer. Mr. Laddie?
And I'm taking a look at it. One of the things that you, and I think you've already hit it on the head with your earlier discussion, the allocation. There's, there's no, a county-owned millage is going to be something that we're going to have to participate in whether we want to or not with all, with a lot of other millages that come to you at the county level. We are still and becoming more and more of a donor community for these services. One of the things that I'm intrigued by from a legal perspective though, is, is the range of allocation. Because when we, when we look at millage questions for ourselves, we're looking at very narrow purposes. And I'm wondering what, what the range or what the scope of purposes is allowed for this senior millage. I can remember what the, I think I can remember the language that was ultimately decided on last time around. But I'm, I'm curious from a legal perspective, just where, where this money can go and still fall under the senior millage that the people voted for. And I think when they think of a senior millage, they think of exactly the senior centers. That's the first thing they think of. They may not think of some, some, again, important but not as directly correlated benefits like handicap ramps or.
Grass cutting.
Yeah, or, or a prosecutor's program for elder abuse and things like that. These are all good things, right? But my question is, have they exceeded their ability to fan out this money to different projects while really putting the burden on, on the true purpose of it? And so that's a question that I'll, I'll look at from a legal perspective. But you, you absolutely do, it is a political problem. It'll continue to be a political problem. You won't be able to get yourself out of having that money leave for the purpose of that millage, assuming that that purpose is lawful. And so that's what I'm going to be looking at in that narrow view. But the more that we as a community, as citizens, as township board members can do to, to underscore the importance of these senior centers and the burden on the communities that have them, the better off we'll all be.
And quite frankly, I'm not sure, I really seen a whole lot from the county in terms of promoting senior centers. You mentioned a lot of the services, and I have friends that are seniors. I'm, I'm approaching there, but I'm not a senior yet.
Some of us have arrived.
And I'm not sure, they haven't told me. You know, I'm checking for a friend, right? I, I don't see a whole lot, this card you mentioned, the activity, I mean, you mentioned being able to go to different senior centers and you have different activities. I don't even know where one would go to look to see what activities are being promoted at the various senior centers around the county. So as far as usage, I think there probably could be a whole lot more folks using it if it was more widely publicized. But I'm not, I don't see that going on myself, but.
And we, you know, I, on a consistent basis right now, we're seeing over, you know, our, our monthly average per, per, or, per day is over 80 individuals inside the building. There are other days where you go in depending on what's being offered, and, you know, there, there may be close to 200 people in the building within a matter of a couple of hours. So, you know, if, you know, if you want to see those numbers of that, I do include them on the board report for Parks and Recreation. And I also include the numbers for some of the programs and that, so.
I just wondered in terms of stacking up against other senior centers, if we were one of the more well-visited facilities.
During COVID, we were one of the only centers that continually offered programming on a daily basis. A lot of them stopped with the social services, lunch free, phone calls, setting up Zoom meetings, like legal services or Medicare services, veteran services, things like that. But we were using our, we couldn't be in the building, but all those, you know, in that parking lot, we had classes in the parking lot, so.
There you go.
It was amazing to do.
That's awesome.
All right, is there a motion in order, Mr. Supervisor?
I think there's, one of the things that I would just like to wrap up with is I think it's something that we should communicate with our county commissioners, that we have a concern with this. As Mr. Lemina mentioned, that we do have our eye on this. And perhaps we have a meeting with them just on this topic specifically. We've, Mr. Lemina and myself met with one of the county board members already with some concerns, and they were addressed. And I think we're working on a solution. But I think this warrants a meeting maybe with more than just a county commissioner, but maybe somebody with the senior services. But I think it's something we need to look at and not just move on after we vote on this budget today. So if everybody's in concurrence, we'll move forward on that as well. Okay, a motion is in order for this millage.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Supervisor.
Okay, and supported by Ms. Hugo?
Supported by Hugo. Trustee Fike?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Trustee Hugo?
Yes.
Trustee Raridan?
Yes.
Treasurer Kilmer?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Supervisor Bennett?
Yes.
Seven, nothing, motion passes.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Future agenda items. Mr. Lemina?
We are going to be getting ready to, our next meeting, we have the 26th. On the 28th, we'll be holding that strategic planning session and asset tour. So I don't know what we'll provide as far as an update on that meeting of the 26th, since we're going to do a complete review of the strategic plan two days later. Couple of things I know that you will have to discuss moving forward though, for future agenda items, is going to, is going to be to really locking down our strategy when it comes to our negotiation process for the police department. I did get an email today from one of the patrol officers, just got back from his vacation. We're going to do some informal dates to get together and map out a strategy for our dates moving forward. So it's probably going to be on that meeting of the 26th. And I would recommend a closed session from the board so that we can kind of review. I did send out the copy of the MERS actuarial valuation on the defined benefit pension plan. We want to walk through that, talk a little bit about that. I can mention it again later in my department report, but we certainly, we really want to use that to formulate our strategy to move forward.
Okay. Any other future agenda items? Anything else? Okay. All right, Ms. Hugo, anything with regard to planning, commission?
There is a meeting this Thursday.
Okay.
I'm unable to attend.
Very good. Mr. White, anything with regard to ZBA?
Meeting next Tuesday.
Okay. Mr. Fike, much reliance?
Nothing, although Lauren Crandall is here, and I publicly thank him for participating in those meetings in the past as a volunteer and a, a good citizen, so thank you, Lauren.
Dr. Raridan, anything with regard to police? Okay. Mr. Kilmer? Up the boxes? Go ahead. I'll bring up Renate. Mark, Mr. Kilmer wanted to bring up that there's something that's been accomplished here in the township that he wishes to recognize Amy Wilkinson for the boxes, the donation boxes. Amy is one of our code enforcement people that worked, I think, on that specifically. I think with Mr. Laddie probably as well. I'm not sure we ended up doing anything legal with it, but.
She did it mostly herself.
Amy was, was on that. And I know the Kilmers were definitely on, I don't know if you guys are familiar, but they have these donation boxes that sit in some of the parking lots. And unbeknownst to most people, those things are not usually authorized by even the business owner. Just, they pull up to their, their business one morning and here's a donation box. And it's not for like a local charity. It turns out that some of them are actually for profit from what we understand. And unfortunately, they also become a collection point for a lot of junk that gets piled up outside of them. Once those things are put in place, it's a nightmare to try and get rid of them. And Amy Wilkinson, one of our code enforcement people here at the township, made it her mission to see what she could do to get rid of those things. It took a while, but we, I think, are rid of all of them now. But you go to some other municipalities and you'll see them plentiful in parking lots. So it really cleans up a lot of space.
Some of them, you see like five or six of them.
Yeah, all in one location. Yep, with stuff piled up all around it.
I would like to also add that Mr. White supported us on that too.
You're here. Okay. Good. Okay, Clerk Robertson?
The, the processing of absentee ballot applications is in full swing. And my deputy clerk, Lynn Henry, has got things running like a well-oiled machine, if I may say so. And so we're, we've processed, I believe, the last figure I mentioned, it was mentioned this past weekend alone, 4,000 absentee ballot applications. And the progress is continuing on a daily basis. So it's, things are going well.
And I think even some of your staff are helping out some of the other townships.
Yes, I'm happy to report that the situation has much improved in one of our other member townships that needed our aid. And, and they, our people went over in the evenings and on their own time to help.
Thanks again for that.
And so we're, we're in much better shape there. And, and so, and I'm very pleased and happy that we're, we're doing that. So, but no, things are, things are going very well. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor.
All right. Attorney Laddie, anything?
No, sir.
Mr. Lemina?
I briefly mentioned it, but the MERS valuation report came in, and I did include that in a mailing out to you guys. A couple of the highlights is that the unfunded actuarial liability, $11,933,000. You know, still heading in the wrong direction. When you take the surplus funds that we've put on there over the last five years, that'll bring it down if the surplus is counted against. It's a $10,276,000. I think one of the biggest impacts though is because of what's going to happen on January 1st as far as what the employee participation rate is, what the employer participation rate is. Starting January 1st, 2023, we don't change anything, 29.29% employer contribution rate of, of wages. For the employee, it would go to 17.29%. So it's really having an impact, and it's really critical. You know, everyone knows the history from a few years ago, we weren't able to move that forward. But this has a huge impact. It's going to have an impact on our ability to retain and recruit the best and brightest when we've got them paying 17.29% out of every single paycheck to support legacy costs within the pension system. And we have to come up with a, a plan, we have to come up with a workable plan. I believe that all three police unions understand that and are willing to find a equitable solution. I've got some really good ideas put down, and I've kind of floated some out there in informal conversations. I'm just trying to put the dollar amounts behind them. Like I said, two weeks from now, if the board will allow us to have a, a closed session, then I'll share with you some of those ideas with some dollar amounts tied behind it that maybe will make some sense and we can, we can move off of this and then develop a strategic plan to attack this unfunded liability like we did with retire rehealth. attack this unfunded liability like we did with retiree healthcare, and let's get this thing off the books as well. Let's get our legacy costs behind us.
Very good. Okay, no closed session this evening needed for anything, so.
Motion to adjourn in order, Mr. Supervisor.
Yes, motion by Raridan?
Motion by Raridan.
Support by Hugo.
Supported by Hugo, we are adjourned at 8:50.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed?
Adjourned, 8:50, 8:50 PM. Okay. I thought, I think an entirely productive meeting, very good.